Okay. I call to order this August twenty seventh regular meeting of the Oberlin School District Board of Education. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gadsden.
Here.
Ms. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Stagel.
Here.
Ms. Semeca.
Here. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any changes, additions, questions, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Gadsden.
Yes.
Ms. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Stagel.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Semeca.
Yes. Are there any citizens' concerns on agenda items? Did anybody sign up online or here?
No.
No, okay. So next we have news of note and presentations. Superintendent's report, Dr. Hall.
Thank you, and welcome back everyone. I know we didn't meet last month, so welcome back board. I'd like to provide an update and we also have a presentation. I'd like to provide an update to the board about enrollment so far. We have about eight hundred and thirty students from pre-K twelve in the district so far. We start off the district with our professional development for our teaching staff. And one of the things we did was focus areas was restorative practices for training. So we trained all of our staff members from cleaners to teachers and support staff on restorative practices. This is a collaboration with the double OEA as well. So it showed a collaboration between administration and the union working together for restorative practices training for the entire district. We also had handle with care training. I know the board heard several things about that previously, a couple of board meetings. So we did train our staff on handle with care procedure for helping students with trauma and reporting system for us. And Mr. Nenemy and as well as a couple of community members helped with that too as well. We did also reviewed our goals and analyzed some data and of course we worked on our literacy training as well. And Ms. Baker did a phenomenal job of organizing the state requirement of everyone having to be trained in literacy. So even our administrators, our teaching staff have to go through a training process for that too as well. Next, I'd like to present, Ms. Baker, she'd like to present information regarding our district collaborative partnerships. These are just, this is just a snapshot of people we work with within the community. This is kind of just giving information on, we know how community members mentioned about who we're working with, who we're not working with, the process. And she's going to give information on a lot of our partners that we work with to be successful in Oberlin City Schools, and we appreciate the help.
Good evening, good evening, board members and community. As he said, this is, you know, Dr. Hall said, it's a quick snapshot. It's going to be more of a list. And once you start looking at some of them, you're going to understand why after the first page, the third page doesn't look like the first page. Because if we did, we'd have probably a hundred slides and we'd be here for hours and you all know I can talk. So we're going to try to just briefly go through. As Dr. Hall said, last couple of board meetings, we've had some community members and parents asking questions about why there are certain trips we do versus the ones that we don't do. We've had an opportunity, Dr. Hall and myself and Mr. Nenemy, to meet with some of the agencies, organizations, businesses, to kind of touch base and say what's going on. Be happy to hear that they were all like, what? We had you all up here a month ago. So, you know, it's good to know that we are working with a lot of the businesses, the colleges and things in our community. We could always increase, right? So here we go. Pardon the tininess, and it gets a little tinier. I wanted to start off talking about the Oberlin College collaborations. Oberlin City Schools currently collaborates with programming throughout Oberlin College. I don't want, you know, if someone's watching on the feed to say, well, they missed my program. I apologize, you know. We did miss some. We'll add it to our list. One of the things at the end, I kind of say, and I'll say it now, is Melissa and I talked. Melissa was part of just, you know, coming with some ideas. We reached out to every single building. We have devised a document for our teaching staff, our staff, where if they're going on a field trip or doing a speaker, we now have a form that they fill out so that we can tabulate all of that information and we can keep a list of who is coming into the district and where we're going. We just started that last year, so we're probably about sixty to seventy percent of our staffs using it. The goal is to have a hundred percent of all of them using it this year, so that by the end of the year, we have true documentation of the businesses, organizations, and field trips that we went on for the year and speakers. Our Oberlin College collaborations, we have philosophy in schools. That was a question, what happened with Fitz? Fitz originally started in twenty seventeen at Eastwood. They were there for two years. Then after two years, they moved up to Prospect. The COVID happened and they did not come back, right? So in communicating with the young lady who does Fitz, it just didn't happen there. So they moved up to the middle school. And when we said, hey, you know, we've had some parents question about coming to the elementary school, do you want to come back? We met with her. She was like, I would be happy to come back, but I don't think at this time I have enough college students to support both the middle school and the elementary school. So Mrs. Weber was just recently in communication with her again, so they could try to see if they could schedule something out just in case this spring she has enough students. But that's just a little information about Fitz. We also have the science department as a whole, I should say as a whole, the environmental dashboard. We work with the environmental department. They come in, they do Eco Olympics, they work in every single building to work on the dashboard. They work with our STEAM teachers, they work with some of our science teachers to implement that into their curriculum. We had this summer, a few teachers who came in and put together some environmental lessons to incorporate into their classrooms that go along with the dashboard. Biology, the high school works with some of the biology teachers at the college professors, excuse me. They have invited the students to come over to do some labs, and they've also let students come in. They've come to the high school to do lectures. So they've had a little bit of both being in the college labs and having the professors to come over to talk to them. Writing in schools, our middle school works with the writing in schools department program. And then our elementary school works with sites, which is the Spanish in elementary schools. That came about part as we became an IB school district. It was required that all K through twelve, all of our students have option, have access to language and have language courses. So we partnered with the college to do that. We now have our own Spanish teachers, so now we have both. We're getting, you know.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Move on. So for the Fitz program, did the program director indicate why she's came back to the middle school as opposed to going back to the elementary school?
So when she reached out to us in twenty, what year did we come here in this building, twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-one, she reached out September twenty twenty-one and said, hey, can we come to the elementary school and do programming? At that time, the district had not opened back up. So we were, we were just moved into this building. We were still no visitors. We were still no programming. We were still masked and six feet, everything. So at that point, there was no, I was the principal at the time and we talked about it. There was no further communication with us. She had communicated with a teacher at the middle school and they said, hey, why don't you come on over? And so she just went ahead and took the programming to the middle school. So it, you know, wasn't, no, you can't come. It was just, there was no communication from her or me. So it did not. Good there? So then we have the Bonner Center for Community Engagement, Learning, Teaching, and Resource. We do a lot with the Bonner, right? We have our nine program. They have America Reads tutors that come K through twelve. We have America Counts tutors that come K through twelve. Those are your math. That come in and work during the school day and then sometimes they work in the after-school program with the students. Nine program, which many of you are familiar with, they work with college visits, college applications, scholarships, FAFSA, essay writing. They have an AmeriCorps, a staff member that works with our students as well. They call her the college guide. We've been doing a lot of work with nine this year, well, last year. Mrs. Semeca was on that team when we started off and then there was a meeting last week where we're trying to pick it back up to see how we can strengthen the partnership and strengthen college career readiness options for every student who wants it. Athletic department, we still use the college fields. We've used, you know, they've allowed us to have a partnership with our athletic trainer when we didn't have one. The basketball team, the college basketball team has come over to the after-school program and over to the, just the elementary school period to help tutor. One plug that I wanted to put in there, and this is going to make this long, I know I'm going to try to hurry, Dr. Hall, is one of the perks of having, you know, the connection with the tutors. The after-school tutors, America Reads, America Counts, the basketball team, they would come here and work with all of our students who wanted tutoring after school. But when they worked with the after-school program, what I thought was really great, a couple of times I would come in here, a lot of our high school students worked the after-school program. You would see, you know, Brandy Hicks who runs after-school program, she would go and work with the students so that the college students could tutor some of our high school students. So I thought that that was definitely a perk where some of our students were there to work, but she also gave them an opportunity if they needed some help from the college students to get some help. And I thought that was definitely a great collaboration. Apollo Theater, we used to have a stronger relationship with Apollo Theater. They used to be the Apollo Outreach Initiative where they used to come to Eastwood and do a lot with film and production. They did some stuff with the middle school, the high school. You know, over time, they've kind of changed some of their staffing, what they do. We've kind of separated. This last year, we've come a little bit together, a little bit more. They've invited our students to a couple of screenings for free. They reached out and said, hey, you want to participate and join with us in programming? So I'm happy to see that we're trying to bring that back. Conservatory, our music department has had a chance to work with the conservatory music department. Margot, who's here, Trener and our music teachers worked with the college. And they had college students from Oberlin College and from University of Hannover, Germany come and observe her music classes. And also the students got a chance to learn a lot about what they do in music in Germany. We have instrumental tutoring that happens. College lanes, not just field trips, when we were doing some of our bowling, some of them, you know, would go over there and practice or have competition at the college lanes. Theater department, we have had opportunities to take field trips over to see screenings. They've donated some of their sets and things like that to the school, some supplies. Our new drama teacher, we've hooked her up with one of the professors over there. And then I know, Ms. Stagel, we've talked about another person she could probably connect with so that we could build that collaboration a little bit more. Mud, Mud Library, Mud Center. Our eighth, eleventh, and twelfth grade students have access to Mud. Where they get a library card and they learn about research and resources and they're able to use the facility. That's part of some of their English courses and their social studies courses that they do that work with. Robinson Scholarship, you know, of course, we're grateful for the Robinson Scholarship allows our students to go to Oberlin College. And then the big parade that the college puts on, they always invite us to participate in that and we'll have different people participate. And we've had some of our staff members honored to kind of lead the parade. Past, I did not want to, you know, leave out Dr. Stanley. So we have the De Boyd Project there and Eastwood had the Fraction Club and math soccer camp, which my kid loved. He called it chocolate math. And we also had African Studies with the Wave Program that was in our district as well. So they're no longer here right now, but you know, maybe some of them may come back, especially with working with some of our after-school program students. And the reason I say after-school program, we're talking about between eighty to a hundred students. And having eighty to a hundred students in that program, you know, sometimes that's more students than just working with one grade level. Allen Memorial Art Museum, Dr. Hall and I met with Ms. Greenwood to talk a little bit about the museum because that was a question, how come we don't go to the museum? And she was like, you do come to the museum, you know, of course you can come more, but you do come. So our high school, we have our English and our social studies teachers, Ms. Martin and Mr. Russell. They have a partnership where they take the students over to the museum and they have one of their lessons, whether it be poetry or history, that aligns with some of the exhibits over there. Middle school, poetry workshop and writing skills, our students work with the art museum. Some of the kids get to go over there, but for some of them, the eighth grade students went over, seventh grade, they came over to work with the seventh grade on campus. OES, she's, she works with our art classes, pushes in with our art teacher. And the second grade actually goes to the museum. The question is, you know, why are they not going like every week, every two weeks? Well, when you go through this list, you see all the different things that we have as opportunities for our students. We're trying to stretch it out, right? We know for a long time, they may have gone to that art museum every two weeks. We're trying to say, what else can we do to give them that IB knowledge outside of Oberlin and in other places in Oberlin? In the OEA Day, they do teacher education in the OEA Day and we're going to have our administrative team go and participate in a workshop at the art museum so they can learn about some things that they can work with their teachers on to say, hey, let's bring the art museum to the building a little bit more or out. They align with our IB units, literacy, one book, one school. They've helped participate in all of those things. Come to our literacy nights, yeah. City of Oberlin, you know, we'd be here forever. City of Oberlin, they touch the school district in so many different ways, whether it be the community services, the recreation department we talked about. Fifth grade works a lot with the recycling department, general maintenance department. We have our SRO who does in the high school courses, some enforcement of laws. In the elementary, talks to them about safety and we have Safety Town. Fire Department, fire safety, they come to family nights and we also, they allow us to have meeting space at the fire department, which is always good. We need to do small PDs with staff or just as the administrative team. Committees, we have a lot of our staff, whether it be administrative or not administrative, that have participated and continue to participate in some of the city committees, whether they be the task force, climate, sustainability, social equity. So we always try to have someone there. And then the Veterans Day Celebration, that's collaboration between the college, the city, and the district. You're going to realize, I'm going to not read all of these because we'll be here forever. Oberlin Heritage Center, we have field trips there. Third grade in our high school utilizes a lot of the history with the Oberlin Heritage Center. They also recognize our teachers. Oberlin Public Library Meeting Space, and we do have our first graders who go there, but they also come here and work with all the grade levels to teach them about the library and the summer reading program. They come to the literacy nights to, you know, inform the parents about their programs. Kendall, we have the grandparent readers that come from Kendall still. They're coming to us and they also allow us to use meeting space. Oberlin First Church, Mount Zion, we use their meeting space. We've used them for PD days of the last couple of years. They say, hey, we got this space and it's great for us if we want to kind of get off of campus. We have the Oberlin City Schools Alumni Association that we work with. In the past, third grade had a bus tour to First Church and City Hall to get a little perspective pre-COVID. You know, talked to Mrs. Weber and she would be interested in looking at, you know, how to get that back, but once again, look at all the things. There's a whole list of things over there. Those are some of our partners and or field trips that our students take. Give you a couple of minutes to kind of look over that. I need a drink of water. All righty, and that's why I said I'm not reading all those because we'll be here forever, right? So once again, these are our partners, you know, going back, these were some, these are the Oberlin ones, right? And there may be some we missed that we need to get on our list. This is some of the work that we do outside of Oberlin. Highlighting a couple of them that you've heard. We know our American Legion posts, right? They always come over to help us, whether it be to do the flags during the athletic events. They're at our open doors. They do a lot in our community. Our boosters do a lot in the community. When we go down to IC Glasses Program, we talked about that last year. Over forty of our students got screened for glasses and many of them received glasses at no expense to that, you know, household. Our partnerships with the LC Three, JVS Salvation Army definitely always helps our families, especially during the holidays. You know, you can see some of the other things with pro football, Hall of Fame, field trips, Great Lakes Theater Partner, we do some things with them. The ESC, a lot there. In the, probably next month, at the board meeting, you'll hear a little bit more about what we're doing with gifted programming. They have a new gifted coordinator that'll be working with our district and she's going to be putting on some family nights for us this year. So I've been working with her so we can get some date schedules. We don't have those yet, but when, as soon as we do, you will know. So she's working with us on that. And then the Lorraine County Community Foundation, I mean, what don't they do with us? And they help us with a lot of funding and programming. The Malts Museum, we have multiple grade levels that participate in the Stop the Hate Contest. We have had students win scholarships for college through it. We've had speakers who've come in and spoken to our high school students, spoke to our high school students. Yeah, you thought I was done, didn't you? I told you I'm not reading them all. So, you know, Avon High School, our orchestra went and worked with Avon High School's orchestra. We've had a couple of opportunities. I know one's not listed, but we've been trying to swap with other school districts, right? We want to go see your music program. The high school students, Mr. Betts, they worked with, what school district was it that you all swapped kids to? Midview, where they came here to spend an afternoon here to see what school looks like here. And then we had a group of students who went over there and we can kind of talk about what are some things that we could do to bridge the communities. So we've done that. We've done the Keystone Wellington College Fair. They do a college fair that they invite our students to. So we've tried to do a lot with, especially with that college career readiness and building the bridge outside of just Oberlin. League of Women Voters, Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, Field Trips, Urban League, they do the HBCU college visits. We're trying to increase the number of students who participate in that next year. We've got our Washington DC trip. Tech E Corps, which, you know, they've been coming to work with us through each summer and they've tried to come during the school year. And we kind of want to continue to build that. One of the things that, talking to Mrs. Semeca this summer, we talked about, we forget also workers. We always try to get kids to go there to participate and we forget about, what about some of those students who are coming home from the summer for college or need summer work? This would be a great opportunity for them to work with Tech E Corps as well.
All the kids that were working with the, the college kids that were working with the students here in our schools were graduates of our schools.
And that's a good thing. We want to continue to do that and publicize that. Trener Farm, I have you on there, Margot. Have an opportunity for some of our students to hear a little bit about, I should say farm, the R is missing. Thank you, Mr. Ibel for saying fam. It is a fam, right? It's the family. So, yeah. And then that is pretty much the end of the presentation because, like I said, I can go deeper if you have questions. But we just wanted to highlight that, you know, there are a lot of places that our students go on field trips. And once upon a time, you know, they might go out of Oberlin. We're trying to get them in Oberlin and out of Oberlin. So they get that, that experience. If we're talking about it where an IB school district and we're looking at that world vision, that global vision, it can't just be Oberlin, but we don't want to ignore our Oberlin opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Appreciate it. Thank you. Couple of things coming up too, like with our Urban League, they have a diversity and inclusion summit coming up next, next week. And we're also collaborating with the city on that as well and having a table together and sending some students there as well. I know we forgot some partners and I know I'll get probably five or ten emails later telling me I forgot them. I apologize. I think we had Oberlin Community Services on there too as well, if not, I forgot which one. It was, was my?
It was.
It was?
It was at the beginning, yeah. I saw it.
Okay.
But I had a question. I forgot I had a question. You, Ms. Baker indicated that this information was being compiled where? Like as we gather this information, where are we saving it, keeping it, storing it?
So that's a great question, right? On our website, we did have a page once upon a time that had our businesses and we didn't really add to it. So Melissa and I've had a chance to talk, Melissa, Melissa, talked about compiling it all and putting it on our website in a little cleaner version. So, I mean, we could do that, you know, if you have any other ideas of how to put it out there because we want people to know. Yeah.
Because we have tons of opportunities from Rotary to City Club, Northson Foundation that support a lot of our students. And it's nice that they come to a board meeting, we kind of recognize them too as a group and we have a lot of partners out there.
But I think, yeah, recognizing them, but, you know, we talked about cleaning it up and putting the list of, and separating in terms of, you know, some of our partnerships versus some of our field trips. So it's a little cleaner for people to see which ones are which. Or both.
The motivation for the question though is also institutional memory so that when we get these questions or when people are looking for things that may have fallen off or gone on hiatus, there's one central place for everyone to look and also add so that we can all keep track.
I had the same thought. When a new teacher comes in, it's nice to be able to say, these are the things that we've done in the past that are available to you.
Love it, love it. So Melissa is gonna, she was smiling and working on it. And that's one of the things we, you know, we didn't come to that point. That's a good point. But one of the things I'm thinking about at the beginning of last year was, how do we know if someone leaves? How do we know what trip that teacher did that was the one that everyone always wants to go to? And so also we started the form for people to fill out so that we knew, these are the field trips that this grade level went on, this teacher took them on, these are the speakers. Because we had to start talking about that. Do we know who the speakers are that are coming into our district? And so having that document where they record it was great. If we can get a hundred percent of that completion, then it makes it easier to add and subtract to the list so that we know exactly who utilized that organization and where they went and what they did. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
What I think is with new teachers too, I think, Ms. Stagel, I think you said last year, our new teachers?
Yes.
And we had organizations coming with our new teachers and welcome. Also in the past, previously and a couple of years ago before COVID, we used to actually have some organizations reach out to some new teachers. I guess Mayor Woodfield, Mayor Woodfield, when he was part of Urban League, he actually called some of our teachers and said, hey, welcome to Oberlin and trying to reach out to them and build that extension. So we probably need to do some more of that and continue our tour as well. Our new teachers, a lot of times goes on tour around Oberlin community. And Michelle Andrews actually facilitated that for us as well. We do try to get our new teachers involved in the community, integrated within the community. You have a question for the board? With all this going on, of course, we are cognizant of instructional time, so we are all trying to get, we try to, we do try to accommodate businesses and things coming in as well. Anytime we can, but Oberlin City Schools have always been open to different ideas for community members coming in to different programming. You know, aligned with our vision and all these organizations have done a great job looking at how to fit within a curriculum for the district as well. I'd like to thank them as well. Okay? Next, I'd like to tell, I'd like to thank all of our staff for a great opening. And that's all the way from our cleaners, administrators, and support staff, cafeteria workers. Phenomenal job. It started from getting the building prepared from cleaning to administrators coming in early to work together in training. Teachers working on the curriculum things as well. It was a great opening, even though in spite of the construction piece, which Ms. Ibel will talk about here in a little bit. But we, it was a phenomenal opening. And also we'll talk about the air conditioning at the high school as well, which I think was a definite winner for a lot of the students there. It was cool, especially during these hot days where some schools closed down. Mr. Ibel, facilities update.
You got it. You just had it. Hi, guys. So a couple of things. First was, again, thanks for the smooth opening, everybody, the amount of time everybody put in. It was a little difficult this year with the city throwing a curveball at us with construction. But before we get into that, again, high school portable air conditioning units in the classrooms. We had to upgrade some electric in those areas. Luckily, our system could take that and we've had electricians come in and add so we aren't blowing circuits all the time running those. Taking the edge off. It's not like central air, but it certainly has helped and been greatly appreciated. So we still have some areas that are not air conditioned, some large areas. Choir room, band room, which are really, really large if those portable units don't work. So we don't have those in the solution yet, but they, we haven't forgotten about them. And of course, the gymnasium, right? So those are, those are major places that require lots of dollars for input. So, again, I think it was a big hit. Construction, North Park Street, if you haven't noticed, there's construction going on in many places in the city. Any, any back road you take, infrastructure, gas line, they're using Eastwood, right, to store some things. But they've turned North Park Street into a one-way, which we worked with the city, thanks for Jeff Baumann, and got with the police department and the fire department to talk about construction, plan to get traffic through. It's hard to get traffic through anyways, but with the help of, again, the administrators, the teachers, the plan has really been pretty smooth. We know that the first day or two of school, when all the parents come and pick up and drop off is always hectic and everybody's trying to find their way and their path. With least resistance, drop your kid off and get out. We think it really went pretty well, even with the construction. So a big help to, I've got to give a heads up to Billy Needham. He has been on Pleasant Street getting the traffic out of the school property. So he's been stopping traffic, moving them. That has been a large help. That has been great. Dr. Hall has even been crossing guard, if you haven't noticed. If you want to see Dr. Hall out with a stop paddle. He has been a crossing guard on East College, which also reminds me, the city has openings for crossing guards. So please apply at the city if you're interested in a short job in the morning, a short job in the afternoon for crossing guards. We need them. The city needs them. Get Dr. Hall off with his tie on these hot days. We've had administrators dress up as parking cones. That has been a lot of fun. We've had them with radios. Again, everybody's pitched in though and it has been, I think, pretty smooth from what we've heard. That is going to continue though, and we're very happy with it because they're widening North Park Street, right? We need this wider. We're happy. The sidewalk is going to be a ten-foot multi-path, multi-use path closer to the woods. So we won't have that close sidewalk by the, by the small road. So the project is supposed to be completed mid to late October. So it's going to be like this for a while, folks. Be patient. We appreciate it if you've been picking up your children somewhere other than the school property, whether it be Tappan Square or whatever else you've arranged, but it's been helpful. We'll be with it for a little while, but it'll be a great product when we're done. Safer for the kids and the traffic for sure. Oh, last point. Drew Seiley with Liberty Development. We're trying to schedule him to come, give you an update on where they are with Eastwood. I know they presented to the city. I know they presented to the city, uh, and I think it was pretty well received. We've asked him to come possibly to the next board meeting. I know the next special session is on, uh, potential middle school, Langston, that whole thing, September 11th, maybe?
10th.
10th? Uh, anyways, we've, we've invited. We aren't sure. We haven't confirmed with him yet, but sometime in September, he can come give us an update on his proceedings with the city and kind of where they are. So.
Thank you, Jim. Um, I'd like to also acknowledge, because then doing it a couple of months ago, was our bus drivers. Our bus drivers do a phenomenal job getting aroused together, working over the summer, um, taking in all the students that, um, getting aroused with all the changes going on. Also in our bus driver realm, also Bob's been driving as well, our van. So we've been all shipping in. And Ms. Ibo will be taking on the bus and the van at the same time. So, um, shortages, we, we'll, we'll make it work. And anything would take, we'll drive whatever necessary to do. Clues Marport?
Awesome. Okay, so we will move on to board items. I will entertain a motion to approve board items A through E.
So moved. Second?
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve board items A through E. Did you want me to go through them or do you want to?
Yeah, she can go through them.
Okay. So A is the approval of the June 18th, 2024 regular session minutes. Um, B is the appointment of the OSBA delegate and alternate for the November 11th, 2024 annual business meeting, which is an annual recurrence. C is the approval of the resolution declaring impracticality of transportation of identified students per ORC 3327.02. D is the approval of the employment of 2024, 2025 substitute teachers and paraprofessionals resolution per Senate Bill 1, Section 4. And then E is approval of a resolution repea, repealing resolution number 2024 027, adopted on May 28th, 2024. And resolution number 2024 032, adopted on June 18th, 2024, declaring the necessity of, and determining to proceed with the submission to the electors of the school district of the question of the issuance of school improvement bonds. In the aggregate principal amount of 22 million pursuant to Section 133.18 of the revised code. And requesting authorizing and directing the Lorraine County Board of Election to remove that question from the November 5th, 2024 ballot. So if we can go back to A, did everybody, if everybody got a chance to look at the minutes, I don't know if anybody had any changes, questions? Okay, none there. Um, and then we have an appointment of a delegate and an alternate. Uh, how do we, what do we normally do for that? How do we go about doing that?
Three of yous have expressed interest to go, so any of the three can be the alternate or the delegate. So.
Okay.
Um, if you are the delegate, you do need to go to the two business meetings. So that does limit what you can go see.
Oh, got it. Okay. So do we need to decide who is the delegate right now?
I have to have it there by the end of the month.
Well, of the three, who was it? Was I the delegate?
You did it last year.
You were, you were the delegate last year.
Before that. Yeah. Okay. Well, I mean, I'm okay with doing it again. Can we, if something happens though and I can go, can we switch?
Yes.
To the alternate.
While Joanne, yeah.
Okay, you'll be the alternate then? Sure. Okay, great. We figured it out. And so the three of us that want to go are me, Joanne and Janet. Is that right? Anybody else? Okay. Um, okay, then can, Dr. Hall, can you talk about, or Bob, the approval of the resolution regarding impracticality of transportation of students?
That's usually done with students who are, um, we're not able to transport to, um, out of different schools like Lake Ridge or, uh, different areas that we cannot go to due to timing or certain reasons. Either timing or we don't have the capability of taking them there. So.
And what's the practical implication of this resolution? Like, do we have to pay somebody money?
Yes, we pay anybody that applies, then they get the state allotted amount.
Goes directly to their family?
At, at the end of the year, once they, once we get confirmation that the student attended the school, then we mail the checks. Yes.
Okay. And then D, we have, um, the substitute teacher and paraprofessional resolution for Senate Bill 1, Section 4. Can you kind of explain what that is?
Yes, this allows the district to employ substitute teachers who do not have a bachelor's degree. Currently, right now, we have about 27 substitutes within our school district. Um, nine of them with no bachelor's degree and 18 bachelors are above degree who are substitute within the district. Usually the nine that are, um, have the no bachelor's degree are currently, um, employees of the district. So they're either have a dual job, like a paraprofessional, then they'll go back and get their, um, non-bachelor's, um, substitute license. This enables them to, when in a necessary, to go into the classroom if necessary. So they'll get the higher rate of the substitute teacher and not the paraprofessional rate. So it allows, um, I would say, four of our current employees, um, are either paraprofessionals, literacy aid, and they're in that realm of a non-bachelor pieces. All of the, all of them, even though they have non-bachelor's, um, substitute license, licensure, they still have to go through the background check requirements for substitutes.
And so it's my understanding that this Senate bill was issued kind of as an emergency measure during COVID. How long will it continue to be in effect?
As long as Governor C, um, allows to utilize it. Uh, right now, we're still short on substitutes and, um, understanding, um, that most districts are right now. So I'm not sure how long it's going to be in effect for anybody governing.
So it's not like a, it ends on December 31st, 2020? There's, there's no date right now?
No.
And we'll continue to approve that annually?
Yes.
So you said we're short on substitute teachers?
Yes, we can always use substitute teachers and preferably crossing guard, but we always use, uh, crossing guard, all the bus drivers and things like that as well. But we are short.
What would be our ideal number if we could have as many as we wanted?
Um, currently now we have 27. Um, some of those are building subs. So our ideal number, if we have maybe 35, 40 on that list, that'd be great. Um, so that can cover. Uh, concern is a lot of times we have our building substitutes cover teachers when they're out. Or cover positions when they're out for maybe a month or three weeks or so. So it's a shell game where we put someone else out and we have to hire somebody else in that place. So we kind of shell game around a little bit. So 35, 40 be nice. Um, and that would help out. And we do appreciate some of the teachers too. Sometimes they jump in and cover some areas too for us.
Any other questions on that one? Okay. And so then the last one, uh, I guess I'll give that to Bob. If you can explain what it is that we did before, what it is that we're doing now and why?
Um, we passed the resolutions, um, not knowing exactly where property evaluations were going to go. Um, Lorraine County Auditor, Mr. Snodgrass, did share us numbers. And Oberlin is going to see a property evaluation of 30.4% on the average across the board for Oberlin resident, or Oberlin School District residents. Um, with that and us being on the 20 mil floor, it will increase our general fund revenue. I did meet with the finance committee. Ken and I had several meetings to go over the five-year forecast and what that looks like. And with the NEXUS money, Ken and the finance committee have decided that we should have enough money to fund this without going to the voters. So the increase that we see come January and the NEXUS money, which that did settle the, the day before we had our finance committee meeting. It came back against, um, Mr. Snodgrass having the right to appeal. But that means we're going to get back payment and interest. And we'll have a set dollar amount. So we know exactly what we're going to get for the 20 to 25 years that when we do put the ballot language, or the resolution forward to the board to sell the $22 million of bonds, um, that will be a part of that program. Other than that, I, I think it's something that we can truly say, yes, you did see a property, your tax bill did increase, but you're also going to get something physical in return for it. And that's going to be the new middle school, like, new middle school.
Okay. Yeah.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
So a couple of things, um, I mean, all of our taxes, everyone who, um, you know, all our taxes are going to go up. Um, and pretty substantially because our housing values are going up. Uh, and so we felt that this was not the right time to, to further increase the tax burden on, on homeowners. Um, there are, when we, back when we put this ballot issue on for this building, we promised voters that we would not collect both the, the two, um, mills of PI, um, permanent improvement. Where we feel like we, so, so the other thing that's going to happen is because we, because of the way we structured our debt, a lot of that debt will be paid off within the next few years, three or four years. And at that point, we'll, I would recommend, I don't know if I'll be on the board at that point, but I would recommend that we start collecting a second mill of PI. At that point, at that point, um, our property taxes will drop significantly because we won't be collecting, we'll only be collecting for the remaining debt. So probably drop from 4.8 mil to maybe down to half of that. And so at that point, when those property taxes drop, I think we'll need to increase our permanent improvement. Um, because basically, w- we have a good solid buffer, about a little over 10 million. Um, and we're going to have to eat into some of that to, uh, to continue doing everything that we need to do. And frankly, with the school enrollment numbers, the school enrollment numbers are dropping. Um, they're pretty clearly going to drop significantly over the next three or four years. Uh, that'll probably be some, you know, that, that we'll probably not replace a teacher or two or three or four. Um, we're gonna have the teachers we need to, to teach our students, but with fewer students, we may have fewer, fewer teachers. But even with all those savings, we will start, likely start running deficits in two to three years. And we'll probably have to bump that PIF. And maybe even five, six years from now, we'll have to come back with, with, with tax increases. But even when we do that, it'll never get back up to the current rate that it is because that 4.8 mil will drop significantly. I really committed myself that, you know, and I think our board is to continue to, to pay our teachers well. And, um, and if that means going back to the community, we will, at this point, I think we're able to do this. And I would, I'm pleased that we're not going to have to add an additional tax burden to property owners, homeowners at a time when the property taxes are going to, are going to be worse.
Thank you.
Okay. And my, mic is off. I'm, I'm not holding it.
Any questions or other comments from the board? Okay. Okay, great. So that was everything. Uh, those were no, any questions at all on A through E? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsen?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. I will entertain a motion to approve treasurer items A and B.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Bob?
Okay, we, um, ended June with, um, $19 million, $5,181.11. Um, we had outstanding warrants of $83,797.75. And no other adjustments were needed to balance. Um, we did close out the year a little bit above where we were. We did have some invoices that didn't come in and had to be paid in July instead of in June that I had forecasted into the, um, five-year forecast. But all in all, for the year, we did collect, um, $308,773 in interest. So, I'm sorry, $593,848,000 in interest. So with the interest rates high, we are returning money to the general fund, about a half a million dollars. Well, general fund, building fund and the, um, NEXUS fund. So. For July, we ended the month, um, we do get our real estate taxes in. So those come in mostly in July and then the rest in, um, August. And we do get an income tax payment in July. So we ended the month balance with $23,789,393.17. Um, we did have, uh, $3,000 in transit. Um, we had a check issued that shouldn't have been issued. Um, it went out ACH and it went out in check form and they cashed the check, knowing that they received a ACH payment. So they did send the money back. So that, that'd be back in this month's. Outstanding checks were $38,608.38. Interest for the month was $70,435.37. Um, we did meet as a finance committee and did go over the new five-year forecast. Um, everything that, for the month of July, came in where we thought it would come in. Um, income tax was up about $60,000 over what I projected and we're still researching where that came from. A lot of it had to do with less, um, refunds on people filing. So. Esser money, we did spend all the Esser money and, um, Ms. Baker and I have been working diligently on the CCIP, the new grants. Um, we, with the allocation of the literacy grant since the first year, we got the literacy grant that was COVID, they did allow us to extend that out. Uh, most of those dollars will be spent for the elementary this year. We are wrapping that up and doing the FER hopefully at the end of this month. And, um, then we'll know how much money we have for the elementary for next year. Other than that, there's really nothing that, that I need to go over except for donations. Um, we had Amanda Coach Smith, $10 to Drama Club, Brittany and Bryce Johnson, $20 to, um, Drama Club. Oberlin Band Boosters, $360.78 to the band. Um, Lindsay and Bob Graves, $150 to the general fund. Ohio Pile Prints, $69.60, or $83 cents to the Ohio Support, or High School Support Fund. Um, Ohio Athletic Association, $2, $2,000 to the athletic fund. And then, um, Ch- Ch- Piley Prints, sorry if I mispronounced it, it's $14.90 to the High School Support Fund. That's all I have, Ms. President.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsen?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve superintendent's consent items A through M6.
Approved. So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Dr. Hall?
Thank you. Item A is for approval of the 24, 25 distance education agreement for ASL services. This provide ASL services for our students, American Sign Language services for our students at the high school. Item B is HI translation services agreement. That's provide, um, hearing and pair services for students, um, in the district, as, um, agency. Item C is inspection and service agreement. And item D is transportation for inspection and service agreement. Those are, that's alternative program exciting. Item E is the service agreement for the achievement centers for the ESC. Item F is a social worker extended hours MOU. Item F is a MOU with a union to have our social workers, who's now under a union, to have 20 additional days like student guide counselors do. Item G is the OPC van driver MOU. That, uh, was an agreement with OPC Union to have our van drivers, um, at a different rate than our bus drivers, um, due to qualifications and experience wise. Item H is approval of the resolution, approval of third amendment to amend and restate consortium agreement. Item I is approval of the 24, 25 student handbooks. J is a service agreement for ASC, for literacy professional development. Item K is final forms, quote, final forms is the system that we utilize for, um, our athletic department. Also, it's a system that we will utilize for, uh, it's really, our, our secretary is really excited about that. Um, EMAs will be all online so that we can actually have access to them online. And parents will be, eventually be able to just press a button and say, hey, you know what? I don't have any, um, additions to the EMAs. So they wouldn't have to get a, an EMA form every year unless they're new. Um, our secretaries are really excited about that and Steve's been instrumental in getting that for, um, training for our staff. Item L is NOVA rehabilitation. That's, uh, provide trainer support for our athletics. Item L is NOVA rehabilitation. That's provide trainer support for our athletics. M is professional service agreement, those are trips.
Got a quick question. So I don't know if it was this company again, but I felt like in the past year or so, we actually got an athletic trainer through one of these contracts that we had that worked with us exclusively. Are we doing that again, or are we still, are we just on a contract basis?
We currently have an athletic trainer now. This right now was precautionary because we have one for the fall. We're covered for the fall. But we're looking at the winter, so we may have to utilize the NOVA care or go to a different source, but we want a contract with them in case we need them.
Got it.
So they have one waiting for us. We do have our athletic trainer back, Dave Dury, so he's working as well with another trainer.
Thank you.
Item Amanda's personnel report. We have some resignations. Oh, M, yes, a M, professional service contract, those are trips that we have. Item N is personal, personnel report. Some resignations. Rescinding some agreements. Item three is addition of changes, people moving on different levels. Tori Brown, James, James Hevel. N four is leave of absence for a few staff members. Item F is employ, will employ John Burglen. He was actually working at the elementary last year, and now he'll be working at our middle school, and he is covering for a teacher that's out, and he'll become our building sub as well. Sarah Coulson, I'd like to also announce that we have increased our building subs at each building. So each building right now will have two building subs per, we negotiated that during negotiations. So each building currently will have two building subs at each building. Item six are stipends and supplementals. Have our new golf, golf assistant coach, Dave Matthews, one of our new teachers. And our varsity basketball girls coach, we actually have him here today. Howard Chambers, he'll be our girls' basketball coach, and thank you for helping out, supporting the school as well. Glad to have you aboard. Also coaching football as well with us, right? We're glad to have you. Request approval of item A through N six from the board.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Next, we have board update items. Does anybody have updates? I know I do.
Yeah.
You do?
Well, reading through some of the state legislation, there were just a couple of things that leaped out at me. House Bill two hundred and fourteen specifically prohibits or limits, or limits or restricts an educator's academic freedom. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Specifically does not prohibit an educator's academic freedom. I thought that was really good news. And the General Assembly also added language requiring public school adoption of a policy reasonably accommodating students sincere, sincerely held religious beliefs and practices, including three excused absences for religious expression days. And I thought that was particularly good news for our Jewish students who might want to celebrate Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah, or Passover. So I thought that was good news.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, I'll go next. So Anne Shum, who's our representative on the JVS Board, sent her update. They had their meeting on August fifteenth, and consultants Burgess and, yeah, Burgess and Burgess, or Burge and Burge, presented their recommendations following a research project to capture feedback on JVS as part of their ongoing communication strategy and engagement process. Thank you. One of the areas of concern involved infrastruc, oh, involved fractured relationships with K through twelve leadership with a focus on common goals to help build pathways for communication around shared concerns. Per the report, trades are as important as they ever have been, and our communities have invested in Lorain County JVS, which is positioned to help area graduates land good-paying in-demand jobs. One of the challenges that JVS faces is ensuring that it has the appropriate relationships in place with the K through twelve leadership and with the larger community to make the most of the service they provide. Burgess and Burgess recommends that JVS initiate a speakers bureau to engage in more one-on-one and group discussions to proactively reach JVS's assorted audiences. And Anne indicates that more details will come as plans to follow those recommendations take shape. So that's the update for JVS, Representative. And then I have an update for Town and Gown. We actually met in the month of July. We had representatives from the city, the school district, and the college, and it was a very productive meeting. In particular, we started planning our State of Oberlin addresses. If you all will remember, we did this last year. It was at the Oberlin Richmond and Activity Center. We did not have participation from the college last year. We will have participation from the college this year. Each group will give a fifteen-minute presentation on basically what, what's going on, an update on what's happened over the year and what's to come, and then open it up to questions to the community. That is going to be on Wednesday, October sixteenth, right here at Oberlin Elementary School, from six PM to eight PM. And we hope that you all will come out and hear what each group has to say and share. One of the things that we are really benefiting from is that we're able to share information in the Town and Gown meeting and help kind of clear up any misunderstandings and information that goes out to the community, as well as amongst each group. Sometimes we just don't have the right information with the city, the college, and the district. And so I'll have Dr. Hall, if you want to address this a little bit more. There was some clarification around Drew Siley in particular, and the Eastwood Project that kind of came out of that meeting. But before we get into that, I did want to talk about an event that the college is hosting that is for the entire community. There's a group called Community Connection, which there are representatives from the school district on that committee, of which I am one. Mr. Russell was one, Mr. Nimony is one, and there may be others. Sorry if I missed you. And we meet regularly, again, to just talk about different issues that we're facing in the community, share information, but also collaborate around activities. And so one of the activities that they're doing is this Sunday, September first, from two to four, at Tappan Square and Clark Bandstand, there's gonna be an ice cream social. There's gonna be free ice cream, which is being funded by the college and many of the business partners here in the community to everyone. They're having it on this day because it's a particular day where new college students are trying to figure out what to do with themselves over Labor Day weekend, and they're not quite acclimated to the community. So we kind of want to bring the community into the center of town and on the campus and, and give the students an opportunity to engage. And so you'll have community volunteers, college volunteers, actually, I'll be helping to scoop ice cream. And everyone's welcome. So if you're listening on the feed, we have these posters up around town and all, lots of different areas that has this information. We ask you to come out, have ice cream. There will be regular ice cream and vegan options, which I'm happy about. And we hope everyone will come and participate. It is open to the entire community. So if you get questions around that, I'm stating it very plainly, it is for everyone, so please come. Okay, and then if you, Dr. Hall, if you want to just speak a little bit about the clarification and, and communication that we were able to obtain at the Town and Gown meeting, I asked this so that we could kind of display how useful this committee is for us.
Couple of months ago, Drew Siley from Liberty did a presentation for the City Council. And the City Council was really impressed with the presentation, and his vision was to eventually have some housing for, for the Oberlin community as well. And collaborating with the city was one of his visions as well. And he, meeting with the City Council members. So during that meeting, we've talked and discussed some of the vision pieces and let him know that it's not gonna happen maybe over two years, three years, but it is part of the vision for Liberty to have housing available for our, our community. So by sitting there talking with the city and the college and City Council members, we all sat there and agreed, said this is good for our community. We do want housing, affordable housing for everyone. So at market value, so we definitely was focused on that vision. We ended up having a conversation with Drew and telling him that we're in full support of, you know, long-term of his partnership with the community and also with the district as well. So it's one step further for us to work with them on the Eastwood property, eventually giving it over to him. And it's aligned with the vision of the district and also with the city of Oberlin.
And then I know we kind of already touched on the finance committees, what they discussed and did. I don't know if there was anything else that you wanted to add related to that?
Well, I forgot to mention that Bob is the, Bob and Dr. Hall are the ones that, that first came up with this idea of not, of not putting a big tax increase. And he, he just noticed that we could do it this way, and I, I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other updates from the board? Okay, so next we have hearing of the public on other items, and I have one name listed here. We have Mary Price. If you can come up, please state your name, your address, your relationship to the district, and you have three minutes to present.
Thank you. Mary Price, three five, three five five West College Street. And I have a daughter who goes to Langston Middle School, and I'm really short, everybody. And I don't want to make this microphone fall. I am calling, I, I'm here to address concerns about the change to the lunch and recess period. I only found out yesterday when my daughter came home famished, having not eaten all day, that the lunch period has been cut to just thirty minutes to include the time to get out of class, to their lockers, to get their lunches, to get to the cafeteria, to eat their food, to put their stuff away, have recess outside, and be back in their next class. So my daughter said the line at the microwave was so long, there wasn't time to warm up her food, and she chose to have five minutes outside instead. And this was the second day in a row she did this, made the same choice today. So I'm very concerned about, excuse me, concerned about that. And I, my understanding is it's because they need additional math intervention, and there's an additional math class. I would just like us to look at other ways that we can do this, because I don't think it will help test scores if the kids are hungry and haven't been outside all day, and especially when half of our district, or half of the school doesn't have a P.E. class either any given semester. Those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So I know that is a recent change, and I would just ask that we kind of investigate specifically the microwave issue and also just monitor what's going on with this change coming kind of without prior notice? And see if, you know, what we need to do to make it work or change it? And if you could report out on that next month, so we'll have an update. Okay, so, yes.
I would express my concern as well. I, I think that kids need, need a break during the day, and thirty minutes is not a long time. Forty minutes isn't a long time either, but it's better than thirty.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So our future meetings, we have September tenth as a work session, six PM here at Oberlin Elementary School. And we will, I don't know if we picked the topic just yet. Is it facilities?
I think facilities. We're gonna go over the financing pieces and have Mr. Nicola and Bob and Ken hopefully give us a plan and analysis.
Okay, now, are we trying to have Drew Siley at this meeting?
Yes, we have invited him to update on our Eastwood.
Okay, so it'll be a facilities-focused work session, so if you have particular interest in that, please come. And then September twenty-fourth is a regular meeting, just like today. So six PM, Oberlin Elementary School once again. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. I know, I'm just not realizing, the blood drive. Oh, the blood drive. Yeah. I mean, our meeting is over, but can we still just give the information? On September, Friday, September twentieth, from nine AM to twelve-thirty, the Oberlin High School City Council will be doing a blood drive, and that's open to anyone in the community that wants to come donate blood. I don't know if you all follow blood drives in any way at all, but there's critical shortage, particularly at the end of the summertime. And the company that we use gives scholarships to the students based on the number of people that we get to donate blood. So everyone, please, if you would like to donate, you can get in touch with Ms. Tolbert Brown, and she can set you up with an appointment.
Thank you. Glad I remembered and did not forget.
I'm glad you remembered too, because I forgot.